Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Karen Goh.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of November 15th, 2017. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Goh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Sullivan. Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. Welcome all to our City Council Meeting. Thank you for engaging in the civic process. I know we have some students from Bakersfield College, so if you're a renegade, raise your hand. Couple more, welcome. Thank you so much for being here. And then, we also have a Boy Scout who is working on his badge, Sam Myers, and I know that you've been involved, Sam, in cleaning up for hospice and trying to beautify that area, so welcome and thank you for being here. Pastor Tyree, are you here? I don't think so. So at this time, in the absence of Pastor Tyler, we will ask Councilmember Gonzalez to offer the invocation. And then, following the invocation, Savannah Vasconcio, who's a senior from Independence High School, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So we had the pleasure of having Savannah function as our student mayor just at the last council meeting for Teen Government Day. She's ASB Vice President, Vice President of the Ecology Club, Vice President of the Math Honors Society, has a 4.1 GPA, ranking 11th in her class. She's received her school's Academic Excellence Award four years in a row, All-American Cheerleader, Blood Drive Ambassador, and a Youth Shepherd at her church. So, welcome, and family, welcome also. Thank you so much for sharing your wonderful daughter with our community. So at this time, would you please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge?
All right. Please join me in a moment of prayer, as your own faith tradition might allow. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together today and providing an abundant community that we may enjoy here in the City of Bakersfield. We ask that you be with us during these important moments, as we discuss in business, that is imperative for the future of our city. We ask that you bless all of our families throughout the City of Bakersfield and every community, so that we may build a much more safe and vibrant and prosperous community for all to enjoy. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Savannah?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Savannah. You may be seated. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones, and in keeping with council policy, council members aren't allowed to receive electronic communications during the meeting. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but it isn't allowed at other times of the meeting. For safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, we ask that no signs are allowed in the council chamber, and we thank you very much for your cooperation. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first item?
A presentation of a certificate of recognition to Panorama Drive homeowners Shirley and Mark Brewer for Fall 2017 Yard of the Season.
Come on up here and join me. Well, how wonderful it is to be able to celebrate beautiful yards or the beauty of our community through Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. And Shirley and Mark have taken the old landscape of their home, and it was overwhelmed with foliage, and they started out all over with new landscape, renovating the driveway, removing the excess bushes, mixing the old with the new, but keeping a beautiful tree in the front to remain as a focal point for sustainable yard. And the new landscape is bringing fresh beauty, beautiful look, to a classic neighborhood. So let's take a look at a few of the photos that we have up there. That was the old landscape, under construction. Look at the driveway. Little bit of color. And now, look what we have. So, would you agree that that's beautiful? Certainly is. So Shirley and Mark, it's my honor and recognition of your home being named Keep Bakersfield Beautiful's Committee Fall 2017 Yard of the Season, to be able to present this certificate of recognition to you, and then...
Thank you. Totally unexpected.
We also have, we have this sign right here, which you may proudly display in your yard and let everybody know that you indeed have the Yard of the Season. So, for those of you out there, that's what this looks like. So, thank you so much. Thank you, and you're welcome to say a few words, if you would like.
Oh, me, huh? Thank you. No, really, seriously, it's a, that's only one section of the yard. It's, I like it. It's low maintenance, it looks nice, it requires very little water, and as I said before, I don't have to deal with it that much, so it's, and I've noticed a lot of the other neighbors on Panorama are beginning to do the same type of landscaping, more dry landscaping with rocks. So, thank you very much. Hopefully this, I'm sorry, hopefully this will encourage more people to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentation of the Mayor's Business Beautification Award to Wes Bradford, CEO of Clifford and Bradford Insurance Agency.
Come on up. So, isn't it wonderful to be able to celebrate more beauty today? And I'm going to invite Heather Pinella, who is my appointee on the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee, and she's going to just start us off. Heather Pinella.
Hello, everybody. It's my honor to be here this evening. I'm playing the part of John Enriquez. We'd really like to recognize Wes Bradford. Wes, your revamping of your building downstairs is, or downtown, is just beautiful. For those that don't know, it's down the corner of H and 19th. Keeps revitalizing all of the parking lots and everything around too, and just bringing beauty. Wes was born and raised here in Bakersfield, and according to what I found, you've owned Clifford and Bradford since 1987? So that's 30 years this year. Congratulations. You're philanthropic through and through, throughout the community, so thank you for all of that. And for those that haven't been able to see it, make sure you drive around downtown. It's gorgeous. Would you like to say a few words?
Here, let me present this to you first, and then we'll do it that way. So, what an honor it is to be able to present the Mayor's Business Beautification Award to Clifford and Bradford Insurance Agency. And here it is. You know what it looks like. Look at those beautiful flowers. I'm just going to hold it this way, so our council members can see it. And I'll do it this way. And so Wes, it's an honor to be able to present this.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you for beautifying our community.
Thank you. I just want to give some condolences first to Mr. Tandy. I really thought that the Yankees were going to be in the World Series this year. But being a Giant fan, I know the pain. So, I just want to tell you a little bit about the building real quick. Constructed, it was constructed in 1917 by Henry Jastro. I think they named a park after him, and it's listed on both the National Registry of Historic Buildings and the Registry of Historical Places by the Bakersfield City Council. It originally was the executive offices for Standard Oil Company. In the 1990, it almost burnt to the ground, half of it burnt, and it was rebuilt by Microsoft, later owned by Rob McCarthy of Lightspeed. We're thrilled to have that building, and we're going to continue to keep it up the way it looks now. So, thank you very much for everything.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Statements.
All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you are intending to speak, would you please come forward, so we can save some time? Just sit in the front row, please. If you have, all statements are given a three-minute time limit, as I said. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statements, please give those to the clerk, and she'll give copies to the council. Please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues, but due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. If you are here to speak on hearing items nine or 10, now isn't the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity when those meeting, when those items come up later in the meeting. So at this time, Madam Clerk, would you please call the first public speaker?
Mayor, we have received two speaker cards this evening, both speakers regarding separate subjects. The first speaker is Tony Martinez, regarding rebuilding together Kern County.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Martinez. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Goh, Chamber of Members. Thank you. I'm here tonight to talk about rebuilding together Kern County. Our President Greg Collins, also retired law enforcement. I am the Vice President. We are one of 16 affiliates in California, the only one in central California, and 160 nationwide. We are a nonprofit, all-volunteer group. I was brought aboard to do the, the clock didn't start.
You are so conscientious.
So I get four minutes, no. I was brought aboard to be the public relations grant writer, spokesperson for our group. We have rebuilding, or rebuilding together has done about 9,000 homes nationwide, and in Bakersfield, in June, we did the Bakersfield Senior Center through a Sears grant. We looked at the neighborhoods, we had a dream, and we wanted to do a project in that same neighborhood, so we looked at the Carnation Track. Either in April, October, we will be doing eight to 10 homes in that particular neighborhood. We've started building partnerships within the community, as they have done in national, Keep America Beautiful and Rebuilding Together have formed a partnership. We will be doing the same here in Bakersfield and partnering with Keep Bakersfield Beautiful will make us a stronger group. We just recently received $25,000 from the Virginia Alfred Harrell Foundation. That $25,000 will go to the project in the Carnation neighborhood. We've also partnered, we're going to be partnering with law enforcement, of course, and rebuilding, and also McKinley School, the Bakersfield Senior Center. Our goal is to finish this project. I know Mayor Goh, this is very close to you, those projects in those neighborhoods, and we have a couple of the grants that we are partnering with. We're waiting to hear from the Spectrum Organization. They like our grant. We did speak to Washington, the Washington affiliate. They have some additional money for us. So, any money that we bring through rebuilding together, we will be putting into these neighborhoods. This project is one of its, the first of its kind here in Bakersfield, and we hope to continue this, this way of doing projects here in Bakersfield. So, you know, we invite you to be part of rebuilding together and support us. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Martinez, Mr. Collins, for your efforts. Congratulations on the Harrell Grant, and we look forward to positive things in our community.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Mayor, we have received two more speaker cards, bringing our total to four. The next speaker is Melanie Farmer, regarding Small Business Saturday.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. I'm Melanie Farmer. I am the President and CEO of the Downtown Business Association. I am here to first say congratulations to the city on receiving the award from the American Planning Association for Mill Creek Park. That was given to you at Third Thursday last month, so congratulations to everybody who was a part of that. I'd also like to invite you and let you know about our event that we have coming up on Small Business Saturday. It's Shop Small. It's a nationwide event by American Express, and we will be doing shopping and champagne in the downtown area. It's our fifth year doing it, and we started off with a handful of people, and now it has grown into a very large event that will be starting at Fall Gutter Roads Insurance Services. They will be having mimosas and muffins and fruit, and there'll be vendors out in their parking lot with a press conference to start the event at 9:00 in the morning. Then we will go to Padre at 10:00, and on for participants to have champagne brunch. And we will have Encore Boutique. We'll be doing models through the event, as well as Sugar Daddies. Then the participants who buy the passports can go to the participating stores downtown and restaurants. By Think Green Petticap, they can take a ride and go through the downtown area as they shop, and each store will have their own shopping experience for each of the participants, and Mary Go Round will be having Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus to greet them and take pictures. Then we will go to the Marriott Hotel at 4:00 for champagne and decadent desserts, sponsored by the Marriott, and lots of raffle prizes from all of the participating restaurants and stores. So we encourage you guys to join us, and we also will be participating, or ending up, I should say. We want to thank the City of Park and Recs and Bakersfield Condors. We will be doing a tree lighting ceremony in Centennial Gardens at 4:30, so we encourage everybody to come out and join us, and then Teddy Bear Toss. That ends our wonderful day downtown. So I hope you guys all join us.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer, and it's always a fun event. I encourage all of you to come out and shop on Saturdays, support downtown.
Thank you. May I present this to the clerk for information for you guys?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor Goh. I just wanted to thank Melanie for her presentation, and I want to thank the DBA and all the volunteers, and the board members, and staff for all the work that they do. Certainly, it's important for all of us to support our downtown, and the best way to do so is to shop downtown and to support the local restaurants, boutiques, and other stores that are down there. And so I'm hoping everybody gets out there on Small Business Saturday. So thank you.
Thank you, Andre, too, for all of your help for downtown. You do a great job downtown.
Can you say that to the microphone? No, I'm just kidding.
Thank you very much. And I see Kathy Butler in the audience, who has been with the DBA, leading that team for many, many years, until we have the capable Melanie Farmer now in that position. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Tyrone Carr, regarding Plans Park and Wayside Park.
Mr. Carr, are you here? I think maybe he's not here. So I'll just go on to the next speaker, please.
Keith Simmons, regarding the same subject.
Mr. Simmons, are you here? Seeing that they're not here, I think we'll just move on to our next item. Oh, sorry. Okay, so Ms... We had called Mr. Carr earlier.
Yes, ma'am.
Please introduce yourself and proceed.
Good evening. My name is Tyrone Carr. Got three minutes, right? Okay, I'm a softball coach for, you know, youth sports, and it's been getting dark, and you know, the kids, they can't practice or nothing, can't use the fields or nothing. So, what we're running into out there is, the parks want us to pay $120 a week now for field prep and this, stuff like that, but the basketball courts lights are on all the time. The, they board park all the time. I mean, they can turn them on, tennis court lights, but these other people who want to utilize the park for our softball fields, we can't utilize them because now the times has changed. We're not asking the city to turn on the park lights every day. Just a couple of days a week, a few hours a day, they could pick the days and the parks. But these other kids are being left out, far as, they just, they just have, just the times changing to where they can't do anything, because by the time they get out of school, it's dark. So, we try to go to the, we try to go to the basketball court and throw balls around. Of course, you know, that's conflict now, right? Because now the guys want to play basketball, and we just kind of just throwing balls around or whatever, which we're insured at every park in Bakersfield. We carry our own personal insurance. But I'm not here to talk about just our team, or we're talking about this whole lot of other kids that's out there that's also utilizing the parks just like we do, but we do the first come, first served thing, so we try to get there before somebody else. But this has been going on for years and years, but lately, the parks been running us off the fields, and I couldn't believe that they're running kids off the field, but yet they got all these transients who set up houses in the dugouts, on the bleachers, and but they're not saying nothing to them, but they're running kids off. And I don't quite understand that part of it. So, what we're asking the council here today is if we can try to figure out a resolution to less, these, these kids that are forgotten for us, these sports and stuff, that don't get the chance to utilize and stuff because of the time changing, if we can figure something out to where maybe a couple of days a week, from three hours a day, they could pick the days and just have the lights on for the public, because it seemed like it just turned into a big city league thing. It's like, let's go, all the adults, now it's all about money. We said, well, we want to use the park, can we practice? We'll pay for, to use the facility. Well, we need the lights. Well, now we got field prep. Field prep, they say they want us to pay $120 for field prep lights, and I'm like, for kids? I said, when did we forget about the kids? You know, at some point, so my time is up, but, which I had more, but I got a lot more.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Thank you. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you. I'm sure we all think that youth sports is very important and trying to keep kids out of activities they're not supposed to be involved with, including gangs. I'd ask Wreckin' Parks to reach out to this gentleman and see if they can work something out. If they can't, I'll cover the 120 bucks. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Keith Simmons, regarding the same issue.
You guys, continuation of just what my coach also exhibited to you guys earlier. Over the course of the last 30 years, I've been coaching sports, youth sports throughout Kern County. We have numerous individuals that have left Kern County, went on to pro football, baseball, track and field, I mean, numerous colleges. These are opportunities that are afforded to these children because they're adults like myself and Coach Carr, who decided that, you know what, we want to give something to our community. In the past, we've went so far as to establish, you know, nonprofits, charitable donations for these children. However, as you know, there's been a, an influx of problems within our communities. We want to be a part of the solution for our communities. I don't live in 90% of the communities that I coach in, however, those children, the only adult after-school interactions they normally get will be from myself or a coach or numerous other coaches that, that participate in after-school programs. We oftentimes pay out of our own pockets, thank you very much. Council, I can't see my, I don't have my glasses on right now. So, Councilmember, thank you very much for offering to pay for that, but this is something that really needs to be addressed. I mean, I can go to any park here in this town, and like former coach, just, other coach just said, we can see homelessness, we can see drug use, we can see numerous things going on, and I just feel like the children and the parents and the coaches and the, the members of the community that want to try to help these children, we need every opportunity and every affordable practice that we can to get these kids, give them at least a running start towards something. And like I said, the city lights would be great for us to have that. I know we have a brand-new complex that we just built out here with the Allstate, or State Farm, I'm sorry, State Farm, for soccer, which is awesome. I go out there and watch my grandson play out there on soccer. We have, one of the oldest parks in this county is currently in just disrepair, really, because the kids that go there really can't afford to even pay the, the entry fees to be insured on that property. I'm talking about Greenfield Baseball Association. We have Southwest Bakersfield, we have Northwest Bakersfield. There's a lot of different places where these kids can all go. However, the one, the one determining factor with these children in these communities is funding. They don't have the funds, they can't get out there and get it. Their parents do everything they can as far as, I'm sorry, my time is up, but you know the gist of where I'm going.
Thank you for speaking. Thank you very much, Mr. Simmons. Councilmember Parlier.
Well, I was just going to allude to some of the comments regarding transients and homelessness, but actually, we have something on tonight's agenda, so I'll just hold until that time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8W for approval. A staff memorandum was received regarding item 8C, correcting a Scrivener's error on item number three of the administrative report.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Parlier has asked for item P to be heard separately, and I would like item E, as in Edward, to be heard separately. Any other council members wish to pull any other items? Seeing none, I will make a motion to approve items 8A through W, accepting E and P.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. So at this time, we will hear item E. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution authorizing Public Works Director to apply for energy-efficient loan to California Energy Commission to go citywide LED street light conversion project, and I just wanted to congratulate the city, and I'm excited about this. I know I personally have asked the city to light all the streetlights at one time, and I know other council members have. It's a quality-of-life amenity, it's a safety crime deterrent, and we've never been successful at really getting everything lit up, and I think this is great, and in the future, it will save the city $600,000 a year in energy. So, exciting, good work. Thank you, staff, and with that, I will move to approve item 8E.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. And now we'll consider item 8P, as in Peter. Councilmember Parlier, please.
Thank you, Mayor. In line with the, the public comment regarding park safety, this has to do with our contract, with our contract with Security Service. Maybe in the future, if Wreckin' Parks could look at maybe even expanding that a little bit. I know that some areas, even though it's right I know that uh, some areas, even though it's right across the, the street from my ward, Plans Park and some other parks in my area, including Wilson, has had some problems with the transients and maybe some of our contracted security could help alleviate that issue. Uh, and with that, I move to approve item P.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. It's now time for the consent calendar hearing. The purpose of this section is to vote on all of the items listed under consent calendar hearing in one motion without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the hearing items listed, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearings portion of the meeting. So, at this time, I will open consent calendar public hearing items 9A through 9D. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that a hearing item be removed from the consent calendar? If so, please come forward. This isn't the time to take testimony, only remove the matter from the consent calendar hearing. And I believe, sir, that you wanted to have something removed.
Mayor, and council, I'm um, live at 3408 Elcia. And, like you said, you want me to say to remove it, yes, because I need to...
Okay, well, we will go ahead and remove it, and then we'll take your testimony later. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, oh, I'm sorry. Not, it's 9C, correct? 9C. Is there anyone else who would like an item removed? Does any councilmember wish to remove an item from the consent calendar hearings? At this time, consent calendar public hearing items 8A, 9A, 9B, and 9D are now closed. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve items 9A, B, and D.
You have a motion? Please cast your vote.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. So, at this point, we will now consider item 9C. Before I open the public hearing, I'll go over the presentation time policy. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers, so it's important that you identify yourself, make your statement quickly, so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff recommendation. Then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the wall behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and after 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up, and quickly end your statement at that point. You may ask questions during the statement, but they won't be answered until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give those to the clerk, and she'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Unless there's approval by the majority of the city council, there's a strict 15-minute time limit for all those in favor or in opposition to staff's recommendation. So, please be concise, avoid repeating the remarks of previous speakers. Madam Clerk, would you please read the item?
A public hearing on resolution of necessity to determine the public interest and necessity for acquisition of certain real property by eminent domain for the Centennial Corridor Project.
Thank you. And staff, do you have comments at this point? Mr. Fiddler.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, uh, tonight you'll be hearing a request for resolution of necessity for a, a partial fee acquisition of approximately 873 square feet of 7,509 square feet of a property located at 3408 Elcia Drive. This is in part of the Centennial Corridor Project. The parcel is located at the easterly end of the Centennial Corridor near um, or in between Railroad and, and State Route 99. As indicated in the admin report, the notifications have been sent out to the property owner. Staff has worked with the property owner, tried to come to a reasonable resolution, uh, has made offers to the property owner. This next step is to enter into a, a resolution of necessity to start the eminent domain process. So, with that, staff recommends approval of the resolution of necessity.
Thank you, Mr. Fiddler. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. How many people would like to speak in opposition to the staff's recommendation? Just raise your hand. Thank you, sir. Would you please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed?
Hello, my name is Richard Martinez. I, I would hope, I handed these papers to the staff that each of you should have gotten. And it's um, it says my opposition. It says, I hear in them, if you have the papers, were you given them? Because they had told me to hand them to you, and I did that. And you would read them, but... Sure, okay. I'll just read a part of what it is. "I have no opposi- opposition to the Centennial Corridor Project taking my property. It would be best for me if they took it all. What I am opposed to is what be left behind once the project is finished. I have to deal with air, noise pollution, effect on my health. I will continue to have to deal with the homeless, the transits, theft, huge security issues by living next door to the freeway. I've been chopped up piece of property worth very little. Since 2012, I had the opportunity to deal with representatives of this project who were often vague, demeaning, angry, could only speculate about issues that were extremely important to me. The city assessors offered me compensation that was one-fifth of the comp- compensation figure that private assessors came up with. I feel this huge disparity showed a lack of good faith on the part of this government representative. I don't feel that my concerns have been adequately addressed. Now, one of these people that I know of my situation would choose to live under this condition. If the goals of this hearing is to obtain at least private injury, then buy my house at a fair market price and release me from the future loss of health, peace of mind, and financial loss. The attached papers tell you what's happening. I've dealt with nine thefts. It's like the Wild West. I'm, I'm pushed up against the wall. I've asked for a fair price, which is very insulting, the way they see the value of my property." I'd at least like you to read the issues and find out what's happening, because as a native of this area, it's getting pushed into a corner again. It gets, it kind of gets old. So, I'd, I'd like you to deal with the issues at hand, and not just push it to the side. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have a, a map?
Unfortunately, I do not. Um, Mike, I have um, staff from Property Management. Do you guys, Don Anderson or Charles?
I, I would also say to Mr. Martinez, we did receive your correspondence. It was at the last council meeting, and I remember reading it. I, I just wasn't sure, I thought you meant we'd got it handed right now. Uh, the map, this is a cut sheet that shows the acquisition of, of the portion of its property that's necessary for the project. In the back area, back area here is where the freeway will be. The red line represents where a sound wall will be. And the dashed line is where the toweth slope will be. Well, actually, it's going to cut. And so, the, his property, the back corner of the property is necessary for the project. This will provide an access road for Caltrans to maintain the uh, the wall and the freeway. Did you have any other questions? Where's this located? So, it's east of Railroad?
Yes, this is at the very end of Elcia Drive on the north side. It's a cul-de-sac that we're making shorter. We bought a half a dozen properties at the very end of it. So, it's, you know where the mini storage is?
Vice Mayor Smith, um, are you familiar with the location of the Wild West Shopping Center?
Yes.
So, Elcia Drive was the easterly, or the southerly side of Wild West Shopping Center. So, it runs parallel uh, to the east, the south side of the Wild West Shopping Center, and crosses over Railroad and becomes a cul-de-sac on the east side of Railroad. This property is located on the north side of Elcia Drive, just east of Railroad.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it, you know, it's not our job to get into the details, but I, it is frustrating to hear that we weren't able to come to an agreement, and I'm, I'm not sure how far, about how far off are you?
Well, let me tell you, the, the process that we go through is dictated by the federal government. It's called the Uniform Act. And what it does, it basically provides that we have to make an appraisal that's reviewed and approved, and offers based on that amount. If the property owner does not agree with our number, they can, we have to reimburse them up to $5,000 to get their own appraisal. And it is not uncommon for situations where the appraisers to disagree. And what that essentially does is brackets the values. We have our number, we have their number, and then we negotiate to try to resolve the matter somewhere in between. And that's what we're currently doing. We've, uh, some of my staff in OPC has met with Mr. Martinez as recently as yesterday. And there's still the discussions, the negotiations are ongoing to try to resolve the matter amicably. Tonight's hearing is not on whether we've offered enough money for the property, but merely whether it's needed for the project. So, we will continue to negotiate with him to try to resolve this, as we do with the other 200 and almost 300 property owners that we've acquired to date. So, this is just a normal part of the process. And it is unfortunate that uh, this, the original design of the project showed his property as a full acquisition. And because the environmental document, they studied the maximum impacts a project can have. And then they go into design, and then they try to reduce the impacts as wherever possible. In doing so, some of the properties that are identified in the initial environmental document that he references in 2012 as full acquisitions are no longer needed as full acquisitions because the right-of-way lines have been reduced to, to reduce the impacts. Is what's one of those properties.
So, the price includes the diminished value of the property?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I have. I guess with that, I'll make the motion to continue to move forward.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Counsel and Mayor's Statements.
Thank you. Do we have any councilmembers who wish to speak? Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, very exciting news for the city of Bakersfield and for Ward 7 today with the news coverage that the Bass Pro Shop is going to be coming to our great city, and to Ward 7 too. This is going to be a great addition, and I want to thank Alan and his staff for all their hard work. I know a lot of people have been involved through its protracted period to try and bring this to the city. This has the potential to essentially create not only a premier retail center for the city, but also potentially thousands of jobs as we go forward on this, and I look forward to be out there on first day when we turn that first shovel of dirt, and welcome to our community. Thanks again, Alan, I appreciate that. Also, as you know, as you travel around the city, abandoning shop, abandoned shopping carts are becoming more and more of an issue. As I go around my ward, I see them, you know, spread just about everywhere. You know, they're in homeless camps and different locations. I know the Councilman Rivera kind of brought this issue up a few years ago. I'd like to revisit it. I'd like to come back to the Legislative and Litigation Committee and maybe talk about some best practices that other cities are doing to try and mitigate this issue. And if we can also reach out to the Independent Grocers Association, to have them as a part of this conversation too, and maybe they have some ideas to help us out. I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items, congratulations to the city and, and to staff on the marathon that was held in town this last weekend. It's a great event for the city and went very smooth the second year, and, and really appreciate the efforts of staff and the organizers. And then the second item was continuing the, the conversation about future finances. We had a presentation on um, where we think we're going to be in the future and, and what possible solutions might be. I thought it would be good, we had dollar amounts that we are probably short in future years. If we could convert that to staff reductions or service reductions, or, or, so we get some kind of a feel, it just, you know, if they were spread equally throughout the city, kind of where we would be with those dollar amounts that we're projecting. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo the Vice Mayor's comments and congratulate the city on a great marathon, second annual marathon. It was fantastic. Special thanks to the Bakersfield Police Department, the Fire Department, and every other department that was involved in helping make this event a success. I, I believe the, the marathon is a really important community-wide event for our city. It makes our city look so good, and it's just a great community-building effort, and I like to support it as much as I can. And obviously, congratulations to Cal State Bakersfield and to the organizers of the marathon who've worked so hard to make such an incredible event successful. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you again, students, renegades, for being here, and Sam, all the best with your Boy Scout medal, and hopefully tonight we'll get you closer there. So, thank you to everyone for engaging in the process, and we are adjourned at 6:04.